...work or whatever the case might have been, so again welcome and thank you everyone for coming out this evening. So we just had an important issue that we wanted to discuss with the community in particular. And the question is as to whether we want to reduce the hours of the four o'clock licenses from four o'clock to two AM. So there's been some discussion for the last six months. So a letter was sent out to all the affected merchants that this would be taking place July the first, 2022, you know, which has been about two weeks from now. And so I will believe that it could be a hills of issue of public safety. And I'm gonna let the couple of policemen kind of express themselves. And then I'm gonna have the village attorney to stand up and give some expression as to why we feel that this is necessary. Then at that point, we will open it up for the public to give their input. So if you would like to speak, I hope you did sign your list. And the trustee Garcia will call the name of all for the people that did sign him to speak.
I guess right there for the village, Sergeant, you go first. I'm gonna move up here so I can hear you. I don't wanna miss anything.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sergeant Murray. For the most part, I myself have been with the village a long time. We dealt with worse. And if you guys remember Will's horse bar, we dealt with several issues there, several issues at the Tally Ho. So we came a long way. As of right now, we have two to three bars in town. The timing, the thing is, we do come across issues after two o'clock. Lately, it hasn't been a problem, but problems do arise. Things that residents don't see, things that the owners, the bar owners doesn't see. We dealt with car crashes. Actually, I had to deal with a incident where a guy side-stripped the whole block. And that was a lot of paperwork. But me, myself, I'm used to it. And a lot of times, I know a lot of the riffraffs, you know, if there's a fight that occurs, you know, soon I'd gladly see me, and I'd tell them, you know, cut it out, you know? Or if they need to be arrested, you know, we'll arrest them. Brown Jug, you know, I think, owner of Brown Jug, he obtained a security company, so that helped us out a lot. So is there officer safety concern in the resident? Yes, because doing to, you know, we're short-staffed. And, you know, if it's a big crowd, it's a big fight, the security, they're there to help us out. But sometimes it's not enough. So I, there's a concern, but we've been through worse. Definitely been through worse, Senator, if Ray Barrow went ahead, because he worked nights mostly.
We can't hear you.
How's it going, Officer Morrow? You know, like you said, lately there hasn't been too many problems. I know the new security's been a lot better. With the old security though, we had, you know, we had a few of them. We were outnumbered, probably ten to one, easily, the amount of guys we have on the street. That, you know, huge officer safety issue. We had Cal City out there, we were still outnumbered, easily, with their help. So, you know, like you said, not too much lately, but, you know, we get DUIs, we get crashes, we get a lot of things. And it's all after two o'clock, pretty much.
And we want to say for the record, you know, it is not a position of the village of Burnham to punish anybody. We don't have any bad against anybody. But it kind of is an issue of public safety. I'm asking the departments to check with other towns and involve in other jurisdictions, other towns that are in close proximity of the village of Burnham. They're closing at two o'clock. If we have an influx of peoples coming over here, and we just don't have the manpower to deal with some of the unrest. We're not saying it has been tremendously bad, no we're not. But we also believe that the closing at two o'clock, once people get accustomed, I mean, if the bars are gonna close at two, then we just do not feel that it would be that much of a risk. So at this time, I'm asking the village attorney to give this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those of you who do not know me, my name is Stanley Pegorick, the village attorney for the village of Burnham. I've had the occasion to represent the village as role as prosecutor since 1974. On my forty-eighth year. And likewise, the experience I've had prosecuting cases, it seems as if, not only in the taverns, but adjacent to the tavern, and after the individual leaves the tavern, there seems to be an incident or incidents that increase after two o'clock. Burnham has traditionally had the latest closing time in the neighborhood. So as the mayor said, and his officers have said, people come here after they start getting drunk somewhere else. And they get drunker. And it leads to police activity, not only at the taverns, but also traffic, domestic, DUIs, what have. So the mayor has this idea, for the interest of public safety. And it's just not the public he's concerned about. He's concerned about the officers. He's concerned about the tavern owners and people who work in those taverns for their safety. He's concerned about the patrons' safety who go and visit these establishments. And most of all, he's concerned about the neighborhood's safety of the individuals that reside here and live there. They come home to a family community, and he wants to keep it that way, a family-oriented community. He says he doesn't intend to, or does not want to punish anyone, but he doesn't want to see anyone get hurt either. And that's the main thing, public safety, everyone's safety. Bar owners, operators, patrons, and the general neighborhoods and the residents of this village.
And the policeman.
And oh yes, and the policeman for sure. And first responders, the firemen that have to come sometimes too. So everyone's safety is involved. So he's proposing to roll back the hours from four AM to two AM. And, you know, frankly, if a person can't get everything done by two o'clock, I don't know what's he out that late for. So I know that this may be a financial imposition on the establishments, but it just has to do with, you know, like everyone else does. The cost of someone hurt, a bar owner, a patron, an officer, a first responder, and worse, some innocent bystander. Summer is upon us, and it's gonna be hot, it's gonna be long. And we know the incidence of mischief are gonna increase. So he proposes to roll back the hours to what he considers a safer time. And charged me with the idea of, you know, the job of drafting an ordinance to that. Now, there are six classifications in our current ordinance for four AM licenses. However, only two licenses have been issued for four o'clock. One is the waterfront by the river, and the other is the Brown Jug, which is by Torrance and Dalton Road over here. Brown Jug has been an iconic establishment since I've been here, in the 1960s, if not before. And Waterfront has also been here a long established time. Both are reputable businesses, and they have reputable owners. Both of those owners are here today, and they're going to express their opinions to you. But I suggest that you take into consideration the mayor's ideas and the idea of public safety for everyone. Not just police, but the first responders, the bar owners, the patrons, and in particular, the citizens and residents of this community. Thank you.
Stanley, thank you for your input and advice. And again, now, we are not naive. And so we know that anything could happen at any time, it could happen at nine o'clock or twelve o'clock before that night. But the basic thing that we're saying is that after two o'clock and the other bars close, then extra peoples are coming into Burnham, and that's too much overflow for us to deal with it in a continuous safe manner. So with that being said, I think we've given enough introduction. So I'd like to acknowledge two of the trustee, trustee Brenda Greb, which is standing. Trustee Hodges, Jeffrey Hodges. Trustee Grace Garcia. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna, I mean, open the meeting up for public comments. Trustee Garcia, would you take the minute for me? If you would, just stand up and state your name and your reason for addressing the public here, and tell us what your position is, and anyone who wishes to speak, you're certainly welcome to do so.
At regular board meeting, you limit the statements to be made by three minutes. Are you having any limit on this evening's statements?
Well, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, if we could try to keep the comments to three minutes or less, then we'd appreciate it. If you want to stay here all night, then I'll be here with you, but never the last. So I'm sure you might want to go home, so thank you. Whoever wants to go first, you're welcome to do so. Whoever wants to go first?
You want me to call names?
Yeah, if you want to, the first one to check, yes.
Kim? Tom Travis?
You're welcome. And with all due respect, why don't you take the regular citizens first? My suggestion to you.
They should have checked in first.
Bar owners, speak last, we have a little more time than three minutes.
I'm sorry, when you said something else there?
I just had to put sign in, and you already came in, so.
I mean, the one that checked, yes, or circled, yes?
That's the one I'm calling.
Yeah. Well, I know she haven't signed in first.
But we said we didn't want to talk.
Oh, you didn't want to speak?
No.
Okay, okay.
Just here to listen.
Okay. So who from the public that wants to speak? And now's your time now, so speak up now, now would be the time. You know, I've had a few people calling me, and I don't see them here tonight.
Sure have, and that.
I will just speak now.
I'll say, add a comment. I understand both positions. I haven't been in your place, and I've been out here over thirty years, so, but it does, you know, I've never seen ruckus or anything. But I understand where the mayor is coming from as far as our village, because most of us are kind of senior citizens now, and the overflow, I think, is the main concern. And if the bar owners can maybe reach out to their regular patrons and let them know if this happens, that we're gonna roll back to two o'clock. If you've got a crowd, they're gonna keep coming. So, you know, it's just, it's just communication. If you let them know two o'clock is where you're gonna start cutting off, then those that go to other places would come back to Brown Jug and the waterfront, knowing that they're gonna have a limit. So hopefully, this can work out for the good of the bar owners and the community.
Thank you, Ms. Leggett. Add that Leggett. The next community person?
Who I have on the list are Tom Travis and Scott.
Those are bar owners. Say anybody else from the community, that includes trustees or otherwise?
My name's on there.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
There's a, I don't see Jerry on here.
I identify as a different name. What did I put down?
An alias? Did I sign in?
Yes, I did. You don't want to go that route, I identify as that name.
Okay.
My personal pronouns are, like, I have a right to tell you my personal pronouns for when you address me. My personal pronoun is vanilla villain. Vanilla villain and white one.
Okay, so.
And I'd like to read a statement that the mayor gave the Chicago Tribune in 2006. "There won't be any more bars or liquor stores as long as I am mayor." He said recently, it's not the way I'd like to promote Burnham economically. Well, you've always says you don't lie, mayor. But since that time, people have lost their liquor licenses, and you've also granted liquor licenses. If you've granted liquor licenses, you've granted one to Wills, which was a complete disaster. There were some public comments made by our chief of police how bad that bar was. But the man was politically connected. The liquor license was in his wife's name. He worked for the village of Burnham. He was a dispatcher for the village of Burnham. And he was terminated by the village of Burnham for, I don't even know if I'm gonna say what the reason is, but he was doing something he should have been doing with a woman while his officers were on duty, and he didn't answer the call. And it took a while to get rid of that establishment. And we had to go through, I think Mr. Bello said it was six thousand calls that you had to make there. And it was after you said you weren't gonna have any more liquor stores or bars in Burnham. Then you also allowed South Beach to open, the same bar that you're allowing to open now. That bar was a total disaster because there's no streets, no curbs, no way to park. They don't even have a parking lot like Todd does. He has parking lots for his customers. There were cars everywhere, they were parking people's parking spots, parked in the street, parked next to their homes. And it was a big, big problem. And really, the only reason we know of the problem because you used to be able to listen to it on a scanner. But transparency has changed now to where all communities, if you don't know this, and I think Burnham is gonna be one of the next communities, they no longer are, you're no longer allowed to listen to a scanner anymore because they've changed their calls to digital. And digital does not go through the airwaves anymore. So a normal person like who lives in our home is gonna be unable to hear the calls or go to some of these places. I'm not advocating for saying that you should close the bars at two because I think you had established businesses that are here that you're forcing the issue on because you allowed two other bars to open that were problem bars. And they're the ones that caused the issues. And I think it would have been wise for you to come up with something showing how those bars, the number of those bars, compared to the bars that are here right now that are four o'clock. I don't know if you could keep some of the bars at four o'clock and give the new bar two o'clock, but mark my words now, the new bar that's opening up, which I don't know what kind of political ties they have because you said you weren't gonna have no more liquor stores or bars in Burnham. So it's gonna be a problem. And I think both of the gentlemen that have had their businesses here, Burnham cannot attract businesses here. They can't keep businesses here. All of our real estate taxes are affected by that. Any businesses that are currently open, I don't think that you should jeopardize those businesses. I don't think there's any problem with either one of these places being open until four.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments? Are there, yes, lady?
Yes. Good evening, trustee Brenda Greb. Our main concern is we don't want to see the bar owners losing any money. But our main concern is the people in our community. That is, that is our concern. And if there's other ways you can do things to make up for the two hours that you're losing, then that would be a good idea. And, you know, but our main concern is the people. We're reading every day, every day, you can turn on that TV, turn on your radio. People can't walk down the street, you can't go to a grocery store, you can't shop. So it's, our concern is the people that live in our communities. Now, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we know where you live, but our concern again is the people in our community. And if there's, again, if there's some ways that you can make up those two hours, that would be great. And closing for two hours, you're gonna save on many things, labor, electricity, et cetera, et cetera. But our main concern is the people that live in our community. And we're here to get shot every day.
Thank you, trustee Greb, thank you, trustee Greb. And as far as, as far as any decisions that are made in 2022, it doesn't have anything to do with anything that happened in 2006 and 2008, whatever the case might have been. Our goal is, we do have to, you know, try to attract new businesses in town and to bring in new tax revenues. And what may have been the case in 2006 might be a different era today, might be a different town today. So that decision may or may not have been put in cement or concrete. Because, again, we tried to promote our town, that's what we're gonna do, and we will let me do that. So I think the town is making progress, and there are things that we can't announce tonight, we can't talk about because they're in the preliminary stage.
And it's turning out to work just fine, so. Always some new thing coming up.
But, so again, are there any other public comments from the community? Okay, well, if there are no other public comments from the community, then we will hear, you know, from one of the bar owners. Whoever wants to go first, that'll be okay.
I've been there close to twenty years, and most of the time.
Can you speak up?
I've been there close to twenty years, and most of the time, most of my patrons have been factory workers and couples that come in after work or other servants from other places. I don't have that problem with the evil coming down on me like other bars I've had in the past. This is the third or fourth time that I've been dragged into a situation down where other bars have had problems, or they want to close early with South Beach, Tally Ho, Wills. I've listed a list of implements that keep the crowd under control, like limit my capacity to fifty percent. You know, get scanners, these at the door. Age limit is thirty-five and up to get into the place. You know, and I feel that would help policing, that would help, you know, deter the bad element from coming in town by me. I've never really had a problem, but I'm willing to make them changes to not have that problem.
Well, for the record here this evening, the bar that was mentioned that has been problematic through the years, if you look at the record, they're not here anymore. And so if you don't govern by the rules, and you create ruckus in the town, then your demise will come. So those bars are not here anymore, so that was twelve or fifteen years ago. And I just brought that up, that was mentioned.
Yeah, and what I mentioned earlier, in my list of resolutions, to make my bar a semi-private bar to keep people coming in from other towns. And all the people that are allowed in my place, the people that have already been verified in.
How can you do that?
Scanner, get ID, give them a club card. So you only let, you don't let nobody come into your house that you think are gonna be a threat to you. I don't want anybody coming in my bar that's gonna be a threat to me. It can be easily done with scanners, club cards, age thirty-five and up, and fifty percent capacity.
I mean, but if we amend the ordinance, if we change the law, then whatever we do for one, then we have to do it for the other. So we cannot offer a different opportunity because if we have any new establishments coming, and we do have a couple here and there, then they will also be closing at two o'clock as well. And we're also looking at a couple gaming cafes as well, and they'll be closing no later than twelve o'clock. Twelve o'clock, they will not go past twelve o'clock. So we want order, we want order. I think it's only fair to the residents and the people.
Well, I personally look like twenty-five percent of my revenues would be knocked out because my two hours are paid. I don't have any business here between ten o'clock and two o'clock at all.
Well, but again, I think that most of us would believe. So if I was used to coming to your bar at two o'clock in the morning, two thirty in the morning, I knew you were not gonna be there anymore. Then I could come at twelve or eleven o'clock or whatever. It's just what people are accustomed to and whatever they know about. If they know they have that extra time, then of course they'll come at that time.
I don't think so either.
So you said that you could make your bar a private bar? Does that mean that every four o'clock bar in town would have to become a private bar? I mean, if we were to go along with that, that is odd.
I recommend every bar in town to be thirty-five and up.
He used to say for his bar, he wants thirty-five and up after a certain time period. I'm thirty and up after a certain time period. It's hard to enforce, but we're trying our best to be thirty and up, like after eleven o'clock.
We'd have to speak to an attorney as to whether that would be legal.
I can't hear anybody. I got a fan in front of me above my head, my hearing aids are locked out.
I asked a question, did Brown Jug ask the existing customers after?
Well, or eleven, I think eleven when security comes in, they card them.
Yeah, and I was just asking, did he ask those customers to leave out?
They have software and screeners that are.
I don't know if I want you to put me out, though. I mean, not put me out, but you know.
What Todd's saying is that there's a scanner, when you come in, you can card it, you scan your license. It goes into a computer in here, in the scanner. So we have their name and their date, and we can send it to the police. We can keep a database for every customer that comes into the establishment. And that way, if they come back and they're not allowed, we scan the card, say, sorry, you're not allowed in here, you caused a problem, or and then it's how you weed out the bad element that you don't want in your bar.
So Stanley, do you understand what he said?
I didn't hear anything.
Okay, well, he's saying that, I mean, Todd is saying that he would like to set up a special system of scanning and peek and screen if people they come in.
Well, the point is, whether you're public or private, you close at two o'clock.
Yeah, this would be public. This is something you do upon, upon bars do it, you don't have to be a club do it. Anybody can do it, you can do it at the library and keep people.
But the mayor's proposal to me is to close everything, everything and anything. At two o'clock.
But that's a proposal. So is this a four o'clock conclusion, or we're just expressing our opinions? Or is there any chance we could make any sort of compromise on it?
I think, I, now's not the time to talk about compromise, because we went through that already.
Okay.
And now it's, you know, it's our own again.
He sent you a letter six months ago. He sent you a letter six months ago.
Right, right. And I arranged the meeting, and we had one. It was very productive.
Are you saying that you'd like to see, if anything, to have this effective date of this? effective date of this ordinance postponed for six months?
Possibly, yes. Like the mayor had said, I, I mean, I, I can't speak for Todd, but I mean, if even if I could close at three o'clock, it would mean a, a lot would help a lot more. I mean, I spent almost twelve hundred dollars a week on security. It's a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars a night to have security on Friday and Saturday. I have two security guards. And my establishment only holds thirty people. And the big problem that happened here was the pandemic. When everybody in Chicago was closed down and we reopened, that's when we had all the trouble in town because everyone, the police said the last few months have not been that bad. But you go back eight, nine months, when it was back to the pandemic, there was a lot of trouble. I had Bullard calling me twice a month to say, Scott, there's, you know, it's, the parking lot was full of people because there's nowhere to go. But since the pandemic has been over, we have, it's been relatively calm. And I've added a second officer or a security guard at night. And they're getting along with the Burnham police and Burnham police, uh, do a fantastic job. They're, they're on it and they're friendly. They know how to deal with the people, but they've got better things to do. The patrol by law. But, um, like they said, there's really not a problem right now. So if we could maybe have a probationary period or something to say, look, let's see what happens in the next six months. If there's a lot of problems, let's revisit it. But for now, things don't seem that bad. Todd's business relies on the Ford plant and other plants. Some of these people don't get out till midnight or one in the morning. That's where they go into the waterfront. Brown Jug a little bit. Our, but our bar after two o'clock, we're pretty full. And it's all mostly regulars. So the security keeps all the regulars there. And whoever walks up, we just say, sorry, we're full. Cause Burnham comes around, like three AM, they come in, they come in and count heads. You know, but I charge ten dollars at the door after eleven. That keeps a lot of the riffraff out. They're not paying ten dollars. Regulars don't mind it because they know they're buying, they're buying safety. Because they know that guard's twenty-five dollars an hour. So, yeah, so that's all. If we could try to work something out and, you know, I mean, I'm all for public safety. That's, that's number one. I, my life depends on it. My livelihood. I got five kids, you know, two in college. I mean, I need to make money. But we want to keep things safe as well. So.
Well, I don't know if, uh, I mean, I don't know if we put this out for a year, a year from now, that, that I'm sure everybody's position would still be the same.
Who's position though?
Yours. Everybody's position. I mean, my position would still be to close at two o'clock.
Yeah.
You still gonna want to stay open later. But even if we do it a year from now, or two years from now, your position's gonna be the same.
Well, how many incidents do I have down by me that would, weren't me being closed?
I'm sorry?
How many incidents do, have I had over the years that weren't me being closed?
Scott, that this is not a situation of punishment or any vindictiveness.
Well, that's what it ends up being.
Huh?
That's what it ends up being because I have no problem down there and you, you're closing me down.
We're not closing you down. We're reducing the hours.
Or how about if we could be grandfathered in since we've been here forever? And there's a new place coming in, say, look, we're changing any new towns, have done that, any new establishment, give them at two o'clock.
I don't know if that would work because then, you know, that would open up other cameras or something that I wouldn't go along.
All right, fine.
Yes, somebody, yes.
Yes, I, I do think we're trying to prevent, prevent things from happening. We don't want to read about us in the newspaper or on the TV. We don't want to do that. This is called prevention. Because they're coming. Uh, in these bars, they're closed in the city, et cetera. They're coming. They ride around, they look for places to come. And they've already been out and they don't want to go home. So they're riding around trying to find places.
But if you don't let them in?
If you don't let them in, we've really got, that's why we've got two security guards. We don't let them in.
But Todd, in your case.
And then that comes in a problem also.
I mean, Scott, in your case, I, I mean, even if you don't let them in, they're still hanging outside. I mean, drinking, leaving garbage everywhere and just making the neighborhood.
Well, if they're drinking, that's not, they commit liquor. That's the job of the, the police and they pull them over. If there'd been some other town that went to a liquor store and bought liquor, that's not on me.
I'm talking about if they out there drinking liquor in a cup and they leaving cups all over the ground all the time.
Yeah, that's, that's not for me. That's, that's.
They pull up in my parking lot too and I frequently have to call the police and, and I don't see anybody get ticketed on the way out, but there could be a lot of revenue for the police, for the villager if they got tickets.
Yeah, but you also have to imagine that it's two or three o'clock in the morning. The police does, not necessarily want to aggravate a situation that they could avoid.
Well, it's not gonna curb the situation unless you do some law enforcement, enforce the laws that are out there. I've never seen a town yet that, that people are allowed to just pull up and tailgate.
I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure there are certain situations that the police officers see and that they cannot address every single situation because sometime I'm sure their Holy Spirit tells them, I mean, let that one go maybe. You know, but they have to go home to their families too. So, you know.
I'd be saying town can make a lot of money off of revenue for.
I mean, I would like for them to stop every car that's speeding on Torrance Avenue in front of Avenue, but they can't catch them a lot of times. I mean, you know, they fly up down the street, so.
Well, it's not gonna stop unless they get ticketed.
Would three o'clock make a difference for you gentlemen?
Huge difference.
What, what about you, Todd? Were you happy up there?
Three o'clock would.
Make great compromise. Way better than two.
Can I say something, please? I, I said I wouldn't do it, but I will.
And what's your name?
I have some property right in, not even a half a block away from Todd. And you were saying about people hanging around and everything else. I've been there for seven years and I've never seen it. So I don't know what you're complaining about.
Excuse me?
I have a strange feeling that you're just targeting these two, uh, establishments.
Oh, that's not to say. I would like for everybody to cut the grass on their property though.
I've got grasses cut on all three of my properties.
I mean, one forty, twenty-five?
Yes. I evicted the person that was in there. Now I, now I take care of it.
Okay. Well, if you would cut that bush out the side of the fence, I appreciate that. On the south side, you cut that bush out. I appreciate that.
There isn't no bush.
There's a bush on the south side of the fence.
I'll cut it. They'll take care of it tomorrow.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. What's on the south side of the fence? It's growing on both sides. Amen?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you stand up?
Well, let's not, but I have nothing to do with this, uh, proposition that you guys are trying to do. But as I was saying, I have that property right on the river and I have never seen any problem by Todd. I don't know how, uh, Brown Jug is. Like they got their own parking spot. Todd has his own parking lot. Nobody gets on, messing with the street or anything like that.
But we're not saying, we're not saying that a property, uh, Brown Jug doesn't have a lot of problems. Even, we're not so much saying that. We're saying that other bars are closing at two o'clock in the morning. Whether it's Dalton, whether it's Mash, whether it's Cayman City. And people are roaming over here for the last couple hours. And that's, that's a little bit more than we would like to continue to endure.
You don't let them in.
Well.
Do you guys have a cutoff time? Like, like, let's say we close at, close at four. Do you close the door too when you come out and you come in?
I shut my lights off at three o'clock. I don't let new people up and at three o'clock.
Unless I know them. Unless I know them.
I get some factory workers.
Their doors are closed.
I get some factory workers. I get poker players. Poker machines usually go steady two, two o'clock, four o'clock. All six machines.
No, I understand those things. I don't keep that.
Yeah.
We have to have, but we need, you say, you know, you say, boom, 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 two, there we go, right? We got drunk drivers, all that type of stuff, you know? But I'm just right here waiting outside. I'm leaning for a compromise for me.
Yeah.
But like, you already closed the bars. It looks like I'm just closing the doors. Can't get in.
My, my doors are closed at ten o'clock. You gotta close them at half.
Okay.
I'm, I'm talking about if.
I understand.
A lot of, everybody comes in under from five years old. And keeps a database of everybody that's there. You have to profile their driver's license, know exactly who they are.
And the thing is, I like to do that, but I like to make it simple. Where for a good job, you know, I love that. The database.
Yeah, the scanner. Yeah.
Yeah, the scanner. I love the idea. I was concerned about how we, like, you know, regulate that, you know, do we deal with the students and stuff? But I like that, actually, doing that.
I mean, I, you know, I could first cover it in and out.
Yeah, but my first thought is to close it. I do lock your doors. It's too, you can't get in. The people close it, they're burnt. That's, I'm not here, but I'm, I'm leaning for, you know, a compromise.
I love your thought.
But.
I mean, because they're grandfathered, so, you know. See, Chris, I could work for him. I mean. Yeah, I mean, isn't that where you guys can get your certification out? And Todd, in your case, you can let the factory workers or whoever, you know.
But the mayor, mayor has a good point about they'll leave two o'clock. They'll be from Dalton, you come in and that's what they'll do. Exactly. That's what, that's what I'm saying. That's why I'm right here, like locking the door, can't get in. But that was a good point.
We're gonna go ahead. We're gonna go ahead. Yeah.
Since the gentlemen are grandfathered with, with that many years.
They're not grandfathered, but they're asking.
Well, I mean, they got thirty, thirty. Don't you gentlemen have thirty or so years out here? You got it. Okay, you got it. Okay. And, and if we don't have, you know, the, the traffic or calling on our first responders, maybe three o'clock would work for a mayor and everybody can, you know.
That's not gonna stop pulling up in my parking lot.
Well, so, here's the thing. If I could say something. So you're asking to use that and try to generate revenue. When you do a DUI, that's not something that's gonna take twenty minutes, thirty minutes. So what that, but what that does is that it takes away an officer or two officers, and then there's nobody else controlling.
I'm saying open alcohol.
No, I get it. But a third DUI, you see what I'm saying? I know what, I know what you're talking about, like, or just taking it in, you know? I get that.
Who watches?
But, a- absolutely, I agree with you.
You submit a jug by the auto place. They're sitting on the side there drinking.
Absolutely.
They're not even part of my bar.
But, but when we're dealing with the bigger picture of a DUI and with this, and with this accident in front of your establishment that I was there for, that took us out for the rest of the night and that happened at two in the morning.
Yeah, yeah.
So then there's nobody else controlling it because we're dealing with the situation.
Yeah, but they're not gonna stop calling us.
Absolutely. And I agree with you.
I'm sorry. Burnham used to be known as the DUI place. Like, everybody used to be afraid to come drinking in Burnham, but now they're not. Now they're not.
Well, we are.
I'm not trying to be offensive at all.
Yeah, I sure it's that.
Yeah, I, that's not how I like to, but people learn from that. Like, if they start being afraid to do this, then they're gonna stop and the war is gonna spread.
Your phone card told her.
Right.
You're not gonna come back.
We do our best that we can with.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
And, and one of the things is that we want to be there to prevent bigger things from happening.
Of course.
So when you start to deal with this and you start to, let's just deal with, wait, you take a look at that. What are you thinking's gonna happen?
Right.
They're gonna get upset because now you're taking money from them. And every time, I get it, it would deter them, but yet we're gonna be targeted already because we get there, we're trying to enforce the ordinance.
We do it. The ordinance says that the idea is to support our police.
Correct. But then, but then if you see the news, I'm, I'm sure everybody has seen it. You're getting shot at from a twenty-two. So should we get shot at for a fifty dollar ticket?
Yeah, no.
What we're saying is that we're just trying to deter. And when we have to deal with big things with this, the DUIs and everything else, it takes away the manpower. Then now we have to focus on what we have at hand, this DUI. And the thing is, it's not only paper. Now you've got time. Do you have to do certain things or else they throw that DUI?
Well, they're gonna continue to pull up through your park.
Hey, we'll, we'll continue, we'll continue to do the patrol, but you, you know what I'm saying, you know?
Unless somebody has any precautions to do it.
And, 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 and to be honest with you, it's like when we were dealing with the pandemic and you were absolutely right. Because I was there. I was probably one of the ones that was going in the bar counting heads. And you're absolutely right.
I know.
And I would ask them, you need to call him or we're gonna shut him down because there will be twenty to thirty people additional than what your capacity wants.
Yeah.
And I, it was me.
I would voluntarily call them.
Absolutely. And I would.
Now, security, that's true. And your security is on top.
Okay, um, okay, well, I think we've got everybody.
Thank you.
I'm input and, uh, so I guess at this time, we are just, uh, closing here, whatever time it is we're announced. So we are just over here. And so we know what everybody's position is. You know what our position is. And those are ones that will be affected by it. Then you will know before the end of this month, uh, as to what that decision will be. Before the end of this month. So thanks for coming.